All four selectmen are present as well as town administrator.
Five.
Five.
Five selectmen.
Sorry, I'm trying to find something here. Five, five.
Five selectmen. Alright, we're all here. That's good news. Alright, let's have a pledge of allegiance. How about this young lady right here in the front?
Yes.
What's your name, ma'am?
My name is Lane White.
Lane, how about you? Can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I definitely would.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Alright, announcements. Alan, I'll take you first.
Why?
Well, because, you know, you know what.
I know. Okay, first one. The Onto Bay Association has taken over the car show that usually is at the Tremontale. It will be the 29th, which is this coming Saturday, from nine to two o'clock, entertainment, food, etc. Usually somewhere between 100 and 150 cars at the facility. Then the next show the OBA will be doing will be a pig roast and car show, and that will be July 13th. That show will be from, I think, 6 o'clock. Again, the car show on the 29th is nine o'clock in the morning till two in the afternoon. There's a potential of rain late in the afternoon, so they should really get that done okay. And there's something else. Oh yeah, Wareham Community Associates, their annual lobster bank at Zeko Marine is, there are tickets available. Usually the members sell them to friends, etc., but just to give everybody a heads up, if they normally go to get, contact the people that get their tickets from, they're now available. It's limited to 175 people.
July 17th.
Jim? Trail maintenance on West Town, West Gate property, Fifth Mill Road, 10 to 12 on Saturday. Looking something to do and learn the property, come on out. Also, there's a Carbromareon Wareham Region Refuge District meetings this Thursday, 6:26 to 5:00 PM, Carver Fire Station. That's all.
Here.
Mary?
No.
Okay, there's nothing there. Next up, citizens' comments. He's going to speak to the board this evening. Come on, come on down.
I'm on, do I have to wait for this to be called?
Oh, you're already on the agenda, so no, you don't need to do that.
Okay.
Next up, board comments.
So I should expand on last week's?
Huh?
Never mind. Okay, let's go. First off, Swiss Beach Road Route 6. I got a request from the police department to see if I could do anything else with MassDOT 5, because we've had three incidents on that road since December, and I noticed myself there are two people in wheelchairs that go across that crosswalk from the Swiss Beach side over to where the market is and the liquor store and possibly even down the shahs. When you stop on the right-hand side heading toward Marion to let them go, nine times out of 10, someone comes speeding by on the left side, and it won't be pretty if they hit that wheelchair. So I contacted MassDOT for District 5, and we got a response today, and myself and Acting Police Chief John Walczek and I will be going, I think it looks like July 8th or July 9th, to sit down and plead our case for some kind of relief at that intersection. I'm not sure what will happen, but we're gonna try. I made a comment last week on signs and bylaws and stuff, and it seemed to get a lot of response in the Wareham Week blog and on Facebook. It was interesting that people thought the utility poles are, the town can't do anything because we don't own them. That's not the case. The Attorney General's approved this, so has town council. Putting a legal sign in the matter where it is, as far as not on your own property, is an issue. For the person who thought Allen Slavon was a former school committee member, I've never been on the school committee, sorry, so your comment that if that's the guy, I don't like him, it's your choice going forward. What came up really interesting about the signed bylaw and everything else is that the one comment that we hear is enforcement. We have a lot of rules and regulations in place, and we have a problem simply because we don't have enough staff, and we have to pick and choose which things to enforce, which we can't, because we just can't do it all. And the bottom line is, when we pass something, the question really should be, as a board before the article goes, before town meeting and a town meeting, can you enforce this or not? I'll give you a simple example. Back in the 90s, the Division of Marine Fisheries basically was run by Marine Fisheries Commission. There were nine commissioners. I was appointed by, at that time, Governor Salucci as to be one of the nine commissioners. And we'd have our meetings once a month, and we'd pass fishing, commercial, and, you know, basically the commercial stuff and the recreational laws. One day I sat and asked the captain of the environmental police, "We just passed two laws today, can you enforce them?" He says, "Allen, not a problem, but tell me which ones you don't want me to enforce so I can enforce these." I think this is a problem that's endemic to the whole system itself, and I think we need to look at this, because if we're gonna pass something, either we enforce it or we shouldn't be bothering at all. So that's just my comment there. And we actually have, and I'm gonna put a little pressure on everybody, a case this past weekend where a person, I don't know who, I know the address, put signs up on the utility poles for a, you know, yacht sale, whatever, and I believe we have, the enforcement officer has three copies of the signs that were taken. One person's been authorized to take signs down, but also it's probably got four or five, but the same person put two signs up, sandwich board signs. One of them was put down on Main Street with our police officer who's on detail, paid detail by the Veralife, where they make that crossing, which is quite dangerous to go across the street by Bessie Park. The sign was right up where he stood. It actually takes away, when someone's looking at a sign, they may not see him, and it hits something, but the person actually put it up there, but also chained it to one of the town poles that are there, which was quite interesting. Also, on, yes, it is funny. Also, on shahs, same thing, by the traffic light there, same exact deal. So we have pictures, we have date codes on the pictures, and we have copies of the signs. So at this point here, if the town is serious and wants to follow the rules themselves, we have enough there to basically take someone in and write them up for serious fines. If not, then we should just make it clear that we're not doing anything. Thank you. Jim?
No.
No?
Peter?
Yeah, I don't think I can top that.
Mary?
Seven. Alright, so I'm gonna use this time, because I went to a sewer commissioners' meeting the other night. Now typically I do this under, what do you call it, but it's more important and it needs to be said when everybody's paying attention, which they tend to do at the beginning of the meeting and not so much at the end. So I went to a sewer commissioners' meeting with town council, and we talked about a group of issues with the sewer. One has to do with some odor issues, another one had to do with, believe it or not, sump pumps that are flooding our system. Especially when it rains, of course, the sump pumps pump more, and 40% of the inflow going into the plant during a rainstorm is from sump pumps that are not supposed to be in the system. In keeping with that, we were lining a pipe, we just did it, we're doing a bunch of linings, relinings, to make the pumps last, the pipes last for another 50 years, so we don't have to go in and dig them out and change them and so on. Well, because of these sump pumps, three of them in particular we ran into, it cost us somewhere about $70,000, because the water comes into the pump while it's being relined from the sump pump. We were able to keep the sewer back, but we can't keep, because we bypassed it, but we can't keep the water coming from the sump pump, and it goes in and it ruins the liner. Now they gotta start all over again and reline that section of the pipe. We're gonna go after those three families for that $70,000. Just letting everybody know. Enough with the sump pumps. Take them out of the system, put them in a drain, dry well out in your yard, do something with them, but you gotta get them out of the system. It's costing us a fortune. 40% of what we take into the plant is just clean water, and we're treating it, and you're paying for it. 40%! That's crazy, and that is only during a rainstorm, meaning that there's a certain level that's all the time going into the plant. Because, you know, the groundwater, a lot of people in dirt in areas have a lot of groundwater. This is very bad situation. And we have no choice to start enforcing it, we have to go after these people, we have to stop it. We can't have it anymore. So if, I'm suggesting right now that if you have a sump pump, we are gonna do a lot of things to find it out, and we're gonna be smoking pipes and doing some things to find all the people with the sump pumps, and when we catch you, it's going to cost you a lot of money. So I would suggest you disconnect them now. It's easy enough to put them out in a dry well. Alright, I just had to do that, it's a real bad situation. There's also a bunch of other good things happening that we're going to be working on in the plant to, to stop some of the odor issues and things of that nature that a lot of people have been having trouble, trouble with. So that's going to be changing the plant a little bit in that vein as well. But we've gotta get this sump pump thing under, under control. Right now, at this point, our lagoons are overflowing when we get a heavy rainstorm. That means we have to call DEP, we gotta have an issue because they gotta okay it, then we gotta clean it up. Alright, I'm gonna let the rest of it, I got other things, but we'll let that go. Alright, next up, appointments, reappointments, and interviews. Old Colony Elderly Services Board of Directors, Yvonne Hitchens. Is she here? Guess not. Alright. Motion, please?
Okay, I move that we approve the application for Yvonne Hitchens for the Old Colony Elderly Services Board of Directors for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Wareham Veterans Council, Paul Geigel?
Geigel.
How do you say it? Gagel?
Geigel.
Is he here?
Not here.
Alright, motion?
Okay, I move that we reappoint Paul Geigel to the Wareham Veterans Council for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Alright, motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Alright, so next up, we have a hearing at 7:15 on the application from Gateway Motors of Wareham LLC, 381 Main Street, Wareham, Mass, for a Class II license.
Did you just skip over?
No, I did, there was nobody here to talk.
Nobody here.
Somebody issued an invitation to the council and agent board to be here this evening?
Well, it's, it's, somebody issued an invitation to you?
They did.
Oh, it's not on here. Okay, you know what?
Was your email?
It's okay, it's okay.
We'll take it up under...
We'll take it up, don't worry, we'll get to you, I promise. Alright, we'll do it. Alright, just give me a little bit of time with these people and we'll do it, okay?
There was also a second group that was supposed to come, it was just a transfer over.
Okay, we can get it, we'll do it.
Caused the issue.
What we're trying to do is trying to get an update from everybody on different boards, and for some reason or another, it didn't get on to the agenda, so we'll, but we'll do it anyway. Alright, now the first thing I need from you is the green cards.
So my joint's filed with the public that I issued an invitation.
No, those, those are not the green cards.
So...
Okay, that's what I need. So how many are there? One, two?
Three, there's one missing.
Three, there's four, there's one missing. Okay. Well, that means that they probably didn't sign for it, which can happen, but it's okay, we have those for notice. Alright, good. Alright. Hold on, hold on, it's here. Yeah, there may be, it's 379 Main Street.
Yeah.
Sound improvements at 379 Main. Now...
You wanna talk to Alan about this, he already made a phone call.
Alright, hold on, we're gonna, I will get to it in a second, okay, Alan? I just wanna make sure we get everything in place. First, we gotta open the hearing, okay? So, motion made by Peter to open the hearing, seconded by Alan. Roll call, please. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter? Patrick? Yes, okay, now the hearing's open. Now, did you wanna say something before we started?
Yeah, we have a little issue. The application is for 381, unfortunately, everything in the town records, tax purposes, etc., is 379, just so you know. What happened is, for some reason, I got ahold of the owner of the property, and it's 377 to 381, which are numbers, but the town, for tax purposes and for assessors' purposes, have everything rolled into 379. So I believe what we're gonna have to do is basically put this through and make the change from 381 to 379. And somewhere down the line, as you develop that property, because some of it you're not buying, you're probably gonna have to make a request to change the license.
That's gonna be a problem, because the abudders lists could have changed, and you have to go get another abudders list.
It would be the same abudders list they have, actually.
Are we sure of that?
Yes, I'm positive. 379 is right in the middle of the piece of property.
It's in the middle of the property?
Between 377 and 381.
Okay, but it goes 500 feet, so...
I understand.
You're still okay with nobody else has been dragged in?
Can't be.
As long as you're sure of that.
Yeah, no, I called the owner of the property to make sure I wasn't...
I'll try to look the property references up while you guys are doing this.
Okay, the other thing is, is this is in, what is it, it's in, what do you call it, district? Wareham Village, right? Did you look up to see, does this need a zoning hearing?
No.
You sure?
Positive, because we issued a license to what would really be probably 377 to Mr. Fitzgerald back about six months ago.
I remember that, but did he go in front of the zoning board?
Wasn't necessary for that, no.
You know what, let's, let's look and be sure, so we don't run into a problem.
Because you had the gas station with repair and cars, and you also had, down in the back, there's an auto body shop, etc.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter. Go to the use table. Can you do that, Derek? Can you look up the use table, please? And look, it's pretty clear, it says, "Used autos," and then if you come down the list, it tells you what zones you need a special permit in. There is a couple of zones that are a matter of right, and that may be it, believe it or not, because I think I looked once upon a time, and it sort of, the line is sort of right in there somewhere. Okay, so why don't you tell us what you're gonna do? Why don't we go with that first, as we go along, anyway?
Alright, I'm John Mello, this is my partner, Joe.
Joe, sorry. How you doing?
This is Bill Madden from GAF Engineering. We're applying for a Class II license at the property that we're discussing right now. We're applying for a 37 car license right now. We're, you know, able to answer any questions that you might have, the specifics about what we plan to do, but that's the general idea.
Jim's saying it's fine.
Go ahead.
Wareham Village 1.
Question that we always have to ask is, on the repair of vehicles that are warranted, etc., is the repair gonna be at the facility, or are you gonna go off facility to have the repair work done?
Everything's gonna be off, off facility, we don't plan on doing any work there.
And you've made arrangements, have a contract, whatever?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on, go, Jim.
That's allowed in Wareham Village 1.
Just allowed as a matter of right.
Allowed in Wareham Village 1, which I believe you're in.
And that's Wareham Village 1, so we're okay. Alright, that's good. You gotta make sure, because otherwise you're just spinning your wheels and...
Mr. Chair, also, Patrick, just to make sure the public knows also, this is our last Class II license at this point.
This is the last one, yes. Alright, so let me just take a look here, I'm just looking at your plan. I see you've got parking for customers, which is good, you got employee parking. Are you gonna run a garage?
No, we have no plans to do that.
Are you gonna service on-site?
No.
Do you have an agreement with a service, somebody to service the cars?
Yes, we do.
Do you have a copy of that?
I do not.
Okay, I need a copy of that before we can issue the license, okay? You have to have, by statute, you have to have either on-site repair or an agreement with a facility to do the repairs. Does, is the, does he have the $25,000 surety bond? In the packet?
Good question. Give me a minute.
We submitted it in there.
Talk about something else?
Yeah.
We're gonna do a lot of talking about other stuff.
Apparently.
Apparently.
Yes.
Best insurance surety, right, $25,000, okay, good. Alright, so the bond's in place, it looks like, this is the display area, now it says "proposed future" of car expansion, so just take a look. How many cars are you asking for at this time?
Thirty-seven.
On the other side of the building, you got two cars? They're a little tight in here.
You know, it's in front of the building on Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, that's a little...
I think they wanted to display them, though.
Yeah, well...
Everything else is behind the building, so I'm sure they wanna, whoops, sure they wanna do that for visibility.
Well, this is, yeah, I mean, that's, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause he's got everything in the back, back behind the building.
So you're gonna put your, your two hottest models out front and the...
That was, that was the plan, yeah.
Don't have much visibility with them in the back, so it makes it a little difficult.
Yeah.
But okay.
I know, a problem with it.
So you're asking for the 37 up front, and then you have 10 future spaces. It looks like to me you can fit 10 in there easily, so why would you not just ask for the 10 spaces now?
I think that it depended on what the rest of the property was gonna be used for, we wanna make it available to potentially rent to tenants, and we didn't wanna commit to that now and then have that hamstring us down the road.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Alright, so 37 cars. Now, there's a couple of things I wanna just tell you ahead of time, because we've been having a lot of trouble with people. You can have cars there that are obviously ready for service, you can even have cars there that are getting ready to go on your line, okay? But your display area has to be the 37 cars and only 37 cars, and, you know, this gets to be a problem, because some people try to fill the whole lot with automobiles and just say, "Well, these are my only 37 cars." It's not gonna go, okay? Just try to, you know, work within your number. If you need more, come back and we'll, you know, with a plan and we'll deal with it, you know what I mean? But don't try to, like, overuse it, you know what I'm saying? It's just not a good thing. It's not good for you, it's not good for us. Anybody have any questions?
I don't.
Nope. No questions? Alright, no?
What's the, what's the setback on your cars up front from the sidewalk?
I did not, I'm Bill Madden from GAF, and I have to the applicant. We don't, we did not see anything in zoning that required a setback for the vehicles from a property line or a, or a street line.
I would just think about, you know, vandalism and people going by.
I can tell you what it is if I had to take, somebody had to measure.
In, in response to that, one of the things that is proposed, and just to update, update the selectmen, we filed with conservation, we had a hearing with them, and they issued a negative determination on it, we're currently in front of the planning board for a site plan review, as part of your application, site plan review is required. So as part of this project, the display area, the plan shows a security fence that will go along the rear of the property, tie into the side of the building that they're gonna use as the office, and tie into the back building on the site. So that was done for the sole purpose of providing security to the site.
I was just, I was just asking about the two spaces in the front.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Do they do site plan review on this?
It's a great one.
Is an issue, oh yeah, it requires site plan review.
I was, I was just wondering about that.
The reason for that is...
Is the seventh year gonna be in front of the planning board, or the eighth?
The eighth of July with the planning board.
For one, and for two, there's gonna be runoff in the cars.
Alan, what did you say to do, ask the, what did you say the number should be on the...
They're gonna come backing at us, I'm telling you right now.
It's the 37.
About site plan review. Okay, so, anybody else?
No, I would recommend we make a motion to accept with the provision that we hold the license until they provide us with a copy of the contract for repair work.
Okay, the other thing too is, they need site plan review, and they haven't done site plan review.
Yeah, well, they have to, we have to hold off now.
So we'll hold until they get this site plan reviewed.
We'll hold it also through by the planning board.
Okay, right, 'cause it requires site plan review, and you haven't done that, you go in front of them, because, because it's on, especially where it's a change of use and also an automotive use, they'll have some requirements for drains or whatever to protect the environment, and you gotta do it, it's okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll probably, we'll see, when we vote, give you a license for cars, but then at least you know. Now you can go to site plan review and get the rest of the stuff out of the way, okay?
Great.
Alright, we'll hold it until you're done. Once we get the approval from the planning board, then we'll give you what you need, alright?
Great.
Okay, so go ahead.
I just did.
Okay, so, so basically, those are the two things. We need that contract, and you gotta go for site plan review, okay? So that's two things. Alright, second.
I just did.
By Mary. Okay, motion made by, well, wait a minute, let's close the public hearing first.
Yes, sorry.
Could I have a motion? Motion made by Peter to close the hearing, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Peter?
You're having a tough night.
I am having a tough night. Peter, Alan?
Yes, Steve.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary, myself. Alright, now let's have that motion now, Alan.
Motion I previously made.
Same motion you made. Second.
Second.
By Mary, still. Alright, motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. So you have your license for 37, 37 cars.
Thank you very much.
Now, go for, go forth and do site plan review.
Thank you.
We'll put these in the file, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's bring the, I'm gonna bring them up.
Let's get the library ladies out.
Yeah. Could I have the library folks come forward now, please? A council on aging, I'm sorry. Come on down. So the reason why, so we are calling, we've got a little confusion in our office right now, because someone is retiring and someone is taking over, so there's a little bit of sort of things going on. But yes, we are bringing in all of the boards and having conversations to see where they are, if there's anything we can do to help them, you know, so and so. So that's why you're here tonight. So maybe you can give us an update of how it's going and so on, and then...
Yeah, let me, let me do a rundown first of what we have accomplished.
Oh, you gotta pull that right at you, though, because the mic right in your face.
All right. First of all, we have reinstated the beacon, because it went defunct when there was no board. And we now not only distribute fifteen hundred around town, but we mail out three hundred and fifty every month. I have a team of volunteers who fold them and stuff them and get them out to anybody who signs up. And that, so far, is, is free. They used to charge for it, we don't charge at the moment. That may change because of postage, but right now, it's free. We, of course, do the trips to Foxwood, which I'm sure you know about. On Tuesday morning, we have instituted a coffee hour from nine-thirty to about ten. And then that segues into chair volleyball, which I know sounds funny, but it's, it's a terrific game. We have a great time. And I think if we haven't accomplished anything else with our activities, the fact that we get some of the people from the adult daycare in there to play volleyball makes whatever we have done worthwhile. We provided computers, we only have three, and we've kind of deferred to the library for any kind of programs. We just are not geared, geared to do that kind of thing. And we recently paid a lot of money to have the big community room cleaned. And they washed those walls right up to this, right up to the windowsills. And because of that, we would like to ask to have it painted. Now, that's not something we can do. I'm sure that because it's town property, the town would have to do that. But I, I, we don't, we don't even care what color you paint it. But it's, it's old, and you can wash it forever, and it's just never gonna come completely clean. And people refer to it as the dungeon. So, we would like to have that painted, and also the coffee room that we use, room 208, that could use a coat of paint as well. There again, because people come in from the outside for the coffee hour, for the volleyball, and they see these rooms that look dingy, and they need to have something done to them.
Okay.
And I would like at least one person from this board to meet with me any day of your choosing and walk through this building and see if we can't please carve out some more space for us. We are desperate for space. They, they have put file cabinets in the big room that we used to use for our exercise class, which upsets us every time we walk past the room. And it seems to me that those file cabinets could go someplace else in this building. So, if somebody would like to take that job on, if you just contact me, I'd be happy to meet with you whenever, and we'll do a walkthrough of the building and see what's available.
Who's the liaison? Does anybody know?
Let me know.
There you go.
Let me know.
I appreciate that, we've worked with the school and such, that the school...
I know. Okay, and any space in the building at all, or just that room? At all? Okay, all right. Now, did you wanna talk about the...
And we don't have anything to do with painting either. That goes through the requests, you'd have to request it through, through Derek's office. That's a day-to-day thing.
What?
The painting.
So, we can't really help you with that. Will, obviously, he's heard it, and hopefully, that will, hopefully, hopefully, that will get us somewhere.
There was also a matter of the daycare people getting dropped off at the handicapped ramp and meeting other vehicles parked there that prevented the GATRA bus from getting to the right spot. Bus driver was very upset the other day about it. And it's also been noted that one of the men that spends some time here was actually dropped off by whoever gave him a ride at the wrong door. And with his walker, he was shuffling towards the ramp, trying to get to the right place. And I don't, you know, maybe he didn't have the wherewithal to say, "This is the wrong door, I need to go somewhere else." But anyway, we'd like some signage that's, that says, you know, "No parking here, this is handicap drop-off for..."
The buses.
Buses, you know, buses bringing daycare people. However the signage goes, that it would be a designated spot for no parking so that the bus can get to the right place.
Well, that makes kind of sense, Derek, does that make sense?
There's nothing out there that indicates that that's what that's used for.
They shouldn't be parking in front of the handicap ramp anyway. Nobody should be there, ever.
But there's nothing that says, and, and yesterday, when I came in, there was... A truck picking up something from somewhere in this building, and he was parked there and...
All right, that makes sense. I mean, they shouldn't, nobody should ever be parking in front of handicapped accessibility, ever. But, you know, some people don't care, and they don't pay any attention, so...
I mean, he could've parked up a little further if he had seen a sign.
We'll put up a sign, and they'll probably look at it and say, "Well, I'm gonna park here anyway."
Yeah, right.
At least if there's a sign, we've got a fighting chance.
Yes. That was requested also.
Okay.
Okay.
Any ladies have anything?
Delivery is normally down in the back receiving door there, so there is no excuse for a truck to be there.
Well, it wasn't actually a delivery, it was a pickup. They came out with two, two wheelers filled with cardboard boxes, so...
Doesn't matter what it is, it's not supposed to be there.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, there's actually a place in the back.
We don't know who he was or what they had.
And that's what those lines are, were the thing there? That actually signifies you're not supposed to park there.
Are there lines out there?
Yes, there are.
Yeah, there are.
Is it fire lane?
Doesn't say here.
Yeah, a sign would help.
To signify the handicap drop-off would be very helpful.
Yeah, we'll have to get that, something done there.
Appreciate it. Yes, that's all we got.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I just wanna say one thing, too, is, is we are very fortunate at this point to have Missy as our director. She has put life back into the Council of Aging now, and she is...
Very nice.
Very obvious she has provided many, many programs now for the seniors. I don't know what we'd do without her, and I'd hate to see her leave. And I, I know she had to get her own grants to pay her salary last year, whatever, and... I, I saw her many times in the office, volunteering her time, being there, filling in for other people. She is an amazing person. And I hate to lose her.
Okay.
But she's, she's great.
Yeah, 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 we've talked to her about maybe taking the next, the next step.
Could you give us each of your names for the record, please? Could you tell us each of your names for the record?
Sharon Frank.
Janet Wilson.
Nancy Sawyer.
Anne Marie Dunn.
Thank you. Otherwise, we, we gotta put it in there that you were here. Okay, is there any questions, any questions of any board members?
I don't have any questions, but I did learn that the garden club's gonna be doing garden therapy at the Adult Daycare Center next year.
Yes, yes, I was excited to hear that, I hadn't heard that.
Are they?
Yes.
It's, it's actually a lot of fun. You guys will be seeing a lot of, a lot more of me, anyway. A lot of the other garden club members, that's a lot of fun.
Garden committee.
We've been doing it at the Adult Daycare Center, the Gateway? For years, and now, I guess, we're gonna move over there and do it. So, it's a lot of fun. We do floral arrangements and have, you know, we get to know everyone. It's good energy, good activity.
Sounds like fun.
Yep.
Sounds like fun.
I'd just like to say, thanks for coming in and bringing your concerns, bringing concerns to us. Otherwise, otherwise, we would not have known. I mean, I didn't know you had these issues or concerns. So, this, you know, informs us, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, the next is an application from Barnacle Bob's Inc., DBA Barnacle Bob's and/or BB's to 2424 Cranberry Highway for a change of hours. How you doing?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, members of the board, Mr. Town Administrator, Tim Shafoney, manager of Barnacle Bob's. We're doing business as BB's Bar and Grill, 2424 Cranberry Highway. And I'm here tonight requesting a slight tweaking of the operating hours. Just generally, due to the way the business has been settling this year, we're requesting a change primarily on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. So, currently, it's Sunday from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Tuesday is where there's gonna be a change. It's currently 12:00 noon to 11:00 p.m., and we're asking for 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Wednesday is currently noon to midnight, and we're asking noon to 11:00 p.m. And I believe the rest of the hours are the same.
Now, there was a question about the Fourth of July.
Yes, there was a last-minute request, and I wasn't sure if it actually got before the board tonight or not. But if it did, we were, it's asking to be allowed to be closed on the Fourth.
So, you want it to be closed on the Fourth of July.
Yes.
Your request has 4:00 p.m. to 12:00. So, it's a little different now. The rules, the way they do it is a little different. So, we can't change it right now. But you can, any day, you can close if you send a selectman and the police department a notification that you're gonna be closed. And you can close on that day if you so choose, okay?
Excellent.
But I can't change what you've put on the thing, because that's, that's the way it is. It goes to A, B, C, C, and I can't change it.
Certainly understandable.
All right. We used to be able to tweak that stuff, we can't anymore. Okay, but that's fine, that's, that's, he has to send that to us and to the police department. And it's better to do it like the day before or a couple of days before.
Very good.
All right, so, these'll be the new hours, though, officially, okay?
The Thursday would be 12:00 to 11:00.
Yes, so that sheet is correct. So, if you can make the motion based on the sheet, that'll be great.
Sorry, I'm... No, he got me this time. Okay, I move that we accept the change of hours for Barnacle Bob's, AKA BB's, to reflect the hours...
That's presented.
Here, written. Is that good?
Second.
As submitted, yes.
Good enough.
As submitted.
Second.
Very good.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Next up, the application from Trevor S. Watson for a one-day liquor license for June. And this is really not a one-day license, there's a whole bunch of them, so... Is June 29th and 30th, July 6th and 7th, July 13th, 14th, July 20th and 21st, July 27th and 28th. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, that's 10 days. How you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
So, tell us what's going on.
All right, well, my name is Lain White, and I am here representing Trevor. He had some meetings this evening, and I am actually helping him with, with this endeavor. He is wanting to just have a small intimate gathering a couple of nights, Saturday and Sunday evenings, with beautiful desserts, espresso, some wine and craft beers, just for people to have a very relaxed, easy, quiet place to go for conversation, to wait for a meal at a local restaurant, or to come for dessert.
Okay.
There is, there is a limit on the number of one days we can give to one person, but, yeah, I thought it was 30.
Thirty. It's 10. It's not the, it's not the limit, it's the use. Typically, these are, we give these out for nonprofits who are, you know, raising money or something of that nature. It's not typical. But this is not a typical situation, just so you know. We know that. Go ahead.
Buzzes Bay Playhouse, we...
Yeah, exactly. So, and this is not a typical situation, and, and believe it or not, I did find out a little bit about, about Mr. Watson and he, the little red inn over there, and some of the stuff he's been doing. And he seems like a pretty nice gentleman, doing a nice job for the town, so we're apt to look at that a little bit better, you know?
It's very kind of you.
That's what I hear, anyway. So, and I believe the town administrator has some information he may wanna weigh in.
Yeah, Trevor's, Mr. Watson, that's where he has his galleries, his pieces in there. And I think, is it gonna go out into the, sort of, the courtyard area with the...
Yes, Trevor has done an amazing job on that building. The inside is really very, much like you were in someone's home. He displays his art, there's beautiful couches and table seating. But he has totally enclosed his property so that it's not accessible from outsiders on the street unless they come in the front door. It is landscaped, it looks almost like, as if you're in Italy, and you're in a courtyard garden with beautiful tables and lighting and piped-in music. So, it's a very, like I said, it's a very intimate setting. We're, we're really thinking that it will be more often word-of-mouth for people. We don't plan on doing a lot of advertising. Trevor has a large network of people to begin with, anyway. There are forty, forty-six seats there between the inside and the outside.
That's all right.
And then there's, you're tips-certified, you'd be the...
I am the tips, I am tips-certified. I am a retired restaurant manager. I was the manager of Trevi Cafe in Mashpee Commons for many years. And I've been, I like to call it redirected now for a couple of years. And I have been friends with Trevor for many, many years. And when he approached me, I thought that it would be a, a really fun thing for our neighborhood in Point Independence.
And he's done some of the fundraisers to the Boys and Girls Club for music and other, other functions that he...
And he did the one for the beautification committee for onset and raised a lot of money for the onset beautification. He's really a benevolent, local guy.
He's got liquor liability. Temporary registration certificate, so he's, everything's here. Everything seems to be in order, I don't see any issues at all.
No.
Okay, go ahead.
What are we carrying for insurance?
Million, what is it?
One and two, isn't it?
Okay. Trevor was up at the office selecting when I was there. He mentioned that he had the open area. Did he supply a layout of the open area to make sure there's control on that?
Not sure that we have that.
I had mentioned that to him.
I don't think that's there. It wouldn't be a bad idea if he gave us a drawing of the facility. Could you get us a drawing of the area that's encompassed when they're serving the alcohol?
Certainly.
If you would, please, and drop that off when you pick up the certificate, okay?
I'm pretty sure Trevor's capable of drawing something out.
Yeah, I'm not worried.
I'm also a degreed landscape designer myself, so I'm sure we can come up with it.
Yeah, that's, that'd be great, so we know the limits of it and all that, you know? All right, is anybody else?
A layout plan that shows the tables, chairs, seating?
Yeah, you wanna show where the liquor's being served in the building. See, that becomes the area that is licensed, basically. Now, the liquor is, can be stored into a compartment. If you're gonna store it in another space, you have to incorporate that in as the storage section.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, anybody else?
I, I would like to know what the zoning is there.
What the what is?
You can pull it up faster than...
I can't pull up the map. That OBA, OBA two...
You mean as far as its zoning? I don't know.
I don't have the map.
What I remember for that area is that the...
Hold on, I'll get it.
It was a pizza shop across the street.
We had the pizza shop, and then there was the seaside store for many years, which is right next to Trevor's building.
I think where Trevor is, there was a bakery there or a bakery next door.
The bakery was next door.
Well, we can look it up.
And I'm sure we'll be cognizant of the noise and stuff.
All you gotta do is look up the field card.
He said it's piped-in music, you know, it's a neighborhood.
Very quiet, very quiet, it's not gonna be loud, raucous kind of music. Like I said, it's an intimate setting.
What'd he put on there, a soiree?
Derek, your mic is off when you're talking, by the way.
Probably not.
Probably not.
This is out back, right?
Yes, it's in the, the side and the out back.
A lighting that's over that side.
Lighting, and there's another small building back there as well. But like I said, he has fenced in and totally enclosed his whole property.
It's Sauntet Village District.
Yeah, it's just, you know, there's no parking requirements because of that also.
Yep. Okay, any other questions?
I have none.
Could I have a motion, please?
I move that we... That we approve the one-day liquor licenses for Trevor Watson as presented in this packet.
Second.
Good, Mary.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 500. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope you, I hope it works out.
When do we pick up the...
You can bring that drawing in, and you probably can pick it up tomorrow afternoon.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Later in the afternoon.
We'll see you there.
Thanks.
Next up is to accept the donation from Diane Hitt to the Wareham Free Library.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept a donation of $100 on behalf of the town of Wareham for the Wareham Free Library in memory of George Shaw from Christine Hurt.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, thank you. Town administrators report, this is a two-week report.
It's a week report, all right.
Hope it's weak.
It's a week report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I'm gonna ask to bring forward is actually because of the change to the OBA for the signs, and it's, it's kind, kind of mixed. I think, I think we would've been all set, but bringing it forward to with the... Yeah, with the car show. And it's for signs for Main Street in front of Toby Hospital, corner of Cranberry Highway and Depot Street, Elm Street in the intersection of Elm and Tyhonet, and Tyhonet and Route 28.
Need a motion? Do you need a motion?
Yes, I do.
Motion that we approve the sign locations as presented.
Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, so now I want to make a point.
Alan abstains.
Alan abstains, okay, so it's 401. All right, so I want to make a point. We've been doing these sign things under 48-hour business. This is not acceptable 48-hour business, okay? There's no emergency in a sign, all right? So we have to stop it.
This was an unusual case, Patrick.
So what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do is I would like to, first off, all these sign things are getting kind of ridiculous, anyway. We keep bringing them up and so on and so forth, so this is what I'd like to do. I'd like the board, and I'm going to put it on the agenda for next time, authorize the chair and the clerk to just authorize these things as a matter of course, okay? So that we can look at them, see what they are, and just sign off on them, so they don't have to come in front of the board all the time. That way, there's no issues about 24 hours or anything else.
I won't be here, but I like it.
Okay.
It's good for me.
All right, so I'm going to bring it up-
When's the last time we said no? Never.
Never.
Exactly.
Is the answer to the question, I think.
That's the point.
Yeah.
And you know what? And it just seems silly to bring it forward to every meeting, and believe it or not, more people are late than not late, just so you know. All right?
This event's a 6:29, over to the...
We just didn't, right? We just allowed...
We just voted that, so we're good.
This goes with this, this goes in that packet.
All right. Anything else, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was at the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, the general board meeting. I was re-elected to the steering committee for them, so I'll be serving another term for the, on the steering committee. And just some information, so we are part of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, which is a joint purchasing group, basically a consortium. It's worked out really well for us. We did have some spike in some of the rates after a series of low increases, and then what you started hearing was the rumblings that Mayflower's in trouble, why'd you do this? So I just want to give some updates on the consortium as a whole. As of, well, right through the end of April, they're running for projections about 6.5 million higher than what they'd expected, and I mean higher to the good. In other words, what we are expecting for having to have paid, we have a surplus of 6.5 million. And the group overall is running right now, after the IBNR, of 6.95 million and under premiums of about 1.3 million. The net assets are a little over 22.8 million, and they were projected two years ago to be as low as 8 million in net assets. So it's been a great group, it's helped, the FY '20 rates are only a 1.5% increase, so they're doing pretty darn well, and if this trend continues, we can see at least another low rate. One of the things I've recommended is to never go back to the zeros, though, because frankly, they did a couple of years of zeros, and once that caught up to you because that's a compounding factor, it was a massive increase. So you always want to keep on building that a little bit, and I'd rather have, when it comes to the municipal budget, and I'll give you the sort of the visual, it's much easier to absorb this, you know, the steadiness, than it is the ebbs and flows. So it's been a great group that we've been a part of, and I really appreciate your support in getting into it. The other item is just something, I was driving last Thursday, I was heading out of town, and I drove out of here, and I was taking a left onto High Street, and a gentleman pulled up in a pickup, and my window's down, and he said, "Hey, you know, your gas lid's open." I said, "All right, thanks," and he starts looking, he was getting ready, a backup, you know, maybe to try and get it for me. I said, "I'll be okay, I'm going to pull over." Next guy pulls up behind him, and I hear a thump, and I'm thinking, "Oh, no, he whacked it," you know? But he pulled up and said, "Closed it for you," and drove off. And, you know, it's kind of, you keep on hearing all the negative stuff, and there's just good folk in this town. So it's just one of those simple things, but it really meant a lot that somebody cared enough to lean over and just hit your ga, you know, the gas door closed. And that's a simple acts of kindness I really appreciate from this town, and, you know, that doesn't make the little blogs or the quips or things like that, but that's the real town, and I appreciate it.
They probably stuck a GPS on there.
To be honest with you, last week I had a lot to say about, you know, how we treat our town and how we represent ourselves and how we're very negative and so on, and I'll tell you, this week, I was pretty proud. I didn't see as much negativity as I have in the past, and I don't know if it helped that I, you know, I said it's time to take pride in your town and love it and take care of it, because, you know, it is us, and there's good people here. Everybody is, there's good people, lots of good people in this town, that will help you out in a minute, and not just with a gas tank either, with a lot of stuff, lots of stuff. So let's keep it positive.
They didn't need to do that. I can tell you, most places, nobody would have cared, or just, we were laughed at.
Oh, yeah.
It was nice, I appreciate it.
You know, they notice things, too, you know? They see stuff that's going on. We just had a big bust the other day. You know, thanks to our police department, they got a call from some people, the next thing you know, they had this big bus go on, we got a bunch of drugs, money, scales, you know, the whole nine yards, and they took three people out of a house, actually on the old street I used to live on. So that's very nice. Yeah, so it's a good thing, not a bad thing, and that's because people are paying attention, and they care about the town, so they mention these things. The police take it seriously. They do a great job. All right, next up.
I'd like to-
Yeah.
...ask Patrick, Mr. Sullivan, a question on the Mayflower Compact. You're a self, is this a self-funding insurance program?
It is, yes.
And it's been very good for all the communities, the cost, the structure, you're able to keep the costs down as compared to being into a full policy program with a Commonwealth or otherwise?
Right, it's been doing better than those. We've had, we're doing well compared to some of the areas, and it is, it's really good insurance, and that's one of the big things for some of our employees, and I know some folks that maybe don't have access to such insurance get upset about it, but it's one of the things that we're able to offer and keep it, keep it within a nice price. And people forget, the employees, going on a few years ago, changed, worked with us to change the health splits, which saved the town roughly, you know, between $800,000 and $900,000 annually, so...
That's great, thank you.
It is really good insurance.
Yeah.
I do it at my work, and in the days where you're getting less and less and less and less for your...
Wow.
That's number two.
Never mind.
Anybody else?
Sorry.
Administrator, are you set?
I am, thank you, and happy Fourth of July to everybody.
Thank you. I'm wearing my fourth shirt, got my little flags on. Liaison reports. Jim?
I'm at the recycling committee meeting, discussed issues surrounding recycling and the transfer stations, good talking with them. We'll be meeting somewhat regularly, and hopefully you can get some input from them on the transfer station and what their thoughts are, which I did somewhat already. So that was nice, and also, could you, you know, the selectman, through you, Mr. Chairman, send out the town meeting timeframes for warrant articles to the committees? That was kind of posed last night, and I know it's changed somewhat, and if you could do that, so we get the committees to submit in a timely fashion the articles that they're going to want on the warrant.
Well, we do that as a...
Yeah, we do that as a...
It's just, they're working on some stuff already, and they posed that question to me, and I know we discussed the, we discussed that last week.
Yeah, we won't open the warrant until, I think it's the 30th.
But we, before that, before that, we do read into the record the timeline for the warrant, which includes opening it, you know, the notification times when the town moderator and the finance committee chairman and whatnot get their copies.
Have we said that yet, or we haven't?
No, we haven't. We won't be doing it until the 30th.
Now, the other thing, too-
July.
The other thing, too, is that process could be altered once the Attorney General signs off on the article from Springtown meeting, that will adjust those timelines somewhat.
But only if we haven't already called the meeting. So if we get to the 30th and it hasn't, it'll be under the old rules, okay? So that's what will happen, but if-
I basically said earlier that they put their articles together and have their public meetings that they're going to need necessary, they'd be ready to move forward.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll be setting the line on the 30th, so we'll know-
All right, thank you.
The 30th of July.
Then you'll send out a notice to them.
Yep, and we always send notices to them all, by the way. All right, next up, anybody else? Oh, wait, Alan, I'm sorry. Did I forget you? I know, I could never forget you, Alan.
It was a quiet week as far as the town goes for committees, there was very few meetings. The, I did, at the Plymouth County level, I admit, last week I mentioned, I basically have sent a request out to our local state rep about the county financial situation going forward over the next, up to 2029, with basically off the cliff financially, starting in 2024, and I've asked to have a meeting to sit down to find out how county government can recoup another 10% of their fees that go to the state right now. And that's all I have for today.
Can I ask you a question, though?
Yes.
I got a thing today about them working on the rail in Phase 1. Is that the new project that they're working on? I see it's in Middleborough, Lakeville, around that area.
What that is, is that's Phase 1, which is the Fall River and New Bedford South Coast Rail Project.
Right.
It's, as I mentioned before, the Phase 1 project has been fully funded in the Capital Improvement Program, which is the CIP, so that's been funded, so there's no excuse not to go forward with it. There'll be a new station in Middleborough. We are working with a senator and a state rep to make sure that the Wareham spur that comes down to Buzzes Bay is somehow included to go to that Middleborough station, and it'll be, originally it was going to be 2022, it'll be operational, 2022 will be testing, and it'll be fully operational in 2023. So what they're doing is they're working on culverts, bridges, et cetera, first to get them all done, and that's what the update you get every time you see that. It gives you an idea where they're working on those items.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
Yep.
Peter?
I probably should have done this under board comments, but I think we should all take note of the fact that Alan was recently voted to be the chairman of the Southeastern Region Economic Planning and Development District. He's been going to those meetings for I don't know how many years, a lot more years than I would have gone, but yet, he put the work in, you know, he's been a good advocate for the town with that agency, and apparently they got tired of listening to all his requests because they made him the chairman, so congratulations for that.
Thank you. My first official meeting is tomorrow.
Your first official meeting?
As chair.
There we go. Congratulations.
Bring home the bacon.
Is it an open meeting? Can we go to the house? I was looking at everybody else.
Oh, we got to heckle, we'll do a little heckling. All right, nothing for me, everybody's all set. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda, do we have minutes from June 11th?
Uh, yes, we do. They're in the bottom of the...
Yep.
I have the meeting minutes from June 11th.
Were we all here?
We were, yes, all here.
Okay, go ahead.
So I move that we approve the meeting minutes from June 11th, 2019.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion?
Yeah, there is, hold on. Hold on, would you? Under licenses and permits, my name was excluded as far as the roll call to open and close, so if that correction could be made, and...
See that, Mary? Just add him into the thing, and she can make the correction.
You just write in an initial, that's good enough.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah, he wasn't in the, yeah.
And just for clarification, on the vote for appointment of David Morris, was that provisional for the one year pending his completion of his licensure? Year and a half.
I think we did, but also contingency hours, availability, sorry.
Before Bob yells at me. The availability of the, being able to take the tests as well. In other words, if the tests weren't offered within that one-year timeframe. But he's actually taken the first one, I think, this week, or, yeah, so...
Right, it's just, it was an understanding, so is it a year and a half? A year? I mean, they come up fairly often, and just to kind of, Peter, go ahead, please, I'm